And so, for this transient guest lodging community conversation, pretty much what this is, is so we can get some feedback. Council is looking into changing some of the rules around transient guest lodging. And, pretty much, I just want to have a really great listening session and be able to kind of move forward and see what the community needs are when it comes to transient guest lodging, and what are some of the concerns about rules changing, et cetera. Yes?
Could you tell us what those rules are that they're looking at changing?
Yeah, so...
Could you tell us what you want to do?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Conanna Sanford, and I'm the new council member. I was appointed in December. Yeah.
I'm A.J. Williams. I'm here as a member of the Planning Commission and the Housing Advisory Board.
Yeah. And so, when it comes to the conversations that council has been having about transient guest lodging, one of the main things is, to me and to the rest of the council, is striking a balance between making sure that current permit holders can continue their business. We know that this is a part, in part, something that really aids people who live in Yellow Springs to be able to stay here. It's an affordability factor. But on the flip side, thinking about losing apartments and single-family homes, like more modest single-family homes, to investors and things like that, who then flip it and turn it into transient guest lodging, where we're losing out on current residents being displaced and the possibility for new residents to come in and find housing. So we really want to strike that balance. And in some cases, I believe the majority of the people who are here live in Yellow Springs, but in some of the cases, we're kind of looking at adding the rule of restricting transient guest lodging property to people who live in Yellow Springs. So that would be getting new permits. So that's a possibility moving forward. But also, the possibility of having to live on the property where the transient guest lodging is. So that would be for new permits moving forward, whereas the current permits would be grandfathered in. The only time that that grandfathered permit would end would be selling the property, and then that permit, the new owner would have to get a new permit, which would have those restrictions on there. So are there any questions about that or any concerns?
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the philosophy of why you think that it needs to be changed, is that the whole idea that especially, I mean, the one thing that you're restricting any future thing is single-family homes or duplexes or whatever, that the owner does not live on-site. From the history of Yellow Springs and the housing crisis, I've owned rental properties here for 15 years, is that buying a new property now, you cannot afford to rent it for what the mortgage costs. Mortgage and taxes, you can't rent for them. And it's not a, the single-family homes are not going to be affordable rentals. They're just going to be sold as expensive house. Right? So they're not, you have the option of short-term rentals that will pay the mortgage, pay the taxes, pay the things, and bring people into town. Yellow Springs is a tourist town.
Yeah.
That our businesses and the reason we're thriving and not a Cedarville or a Jamestown or Obsinia is because of the tourist dollars coming in. And people coming in and staying in short-term housing are bringing that money in.
So I can totally see that perspective, especially thinking about the, like you mentioned, modest family, single-family homes. If you try to rent it for an affordable rate, that amount will not pay the mortgage and taxes. So, I mean, that's a perspective that we want to hear in this type of meeting.
I do have a question now. The regulations, as you amend them, would you, would they be tied to the current zoning so that Airbnbs might exist in one type of zoning without an onsite owner living there in the property versus one where it's, you know, R1, for example? In other words, downtown, why would an owner need to live at an Airbnb that's downtown?
Yeah, so...
That's a business, this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, why would you require that?
I was gonna say that, to me, it seems significant to talk about, does the owner live here in town somewhere, or is it someone who lives in another city and is just buying up properties and renting them on Airbnb?
Yeah.
That, I really wouldn't care to see Yellow Springs go that road.
But there's only two, what I've seen, two properties. So I see regulating that, but that's not my issue. When there's only two properties, why hit it with a bat? It's an act, you know? But my issue is, why would you want to regulate a downtown property that somebody owns? Maybe they rent the downstairs to a business and they want to use the upstairs for an Airbnb. Why would they have to live on-site?
Yeah, and so that's where, I mean, for that specific rule, kind of looking more at single-family homes and things like that. But that's, that would be an issue where we would have to kind of look into that specifically, because it wouldn't make sense if you have a one-bedroom apartment that you're renting above a business, to say, "Oh, you know, I'm gonna live here in this one bedroom." You know, that would be something that we'd have to kind of pull.
I'm recommending that you look at that.
Right.
My name is Kathy Self, some part of the Village Council also. And, just to speak to the question relative to zoning, I mean, certainly zoning as a tool, you know, making modifications in current zoning districts, et cetera, is a tool that could be used and probably would be used and modified in various circumstances. So, I mean, nothing's hard and fast, but certainly, you know, those type of nuanced situations that you're referring to, you know, are where, you know, certain things would go one way or another. You know, there's, you know, to Dan's point, if I would just simplify what you were saying, taking into account your position in owning a property and trying to pay for it, I guess what I, when I started talking about this, I can, I will tell you, it's simple, it is as simple as this. I wanted to stop what I saw happening. What I saw was, people that I knew, not just some resident, people who I knew personally and worked with, who were asked to leave their home that they lived in for years, and now that place that they were living, it was a long-term rental, it was now a short-term rental. And then they're forced, I'll be nice about it, they were asked, you know, to go live somewhere else. And so, when you look at the numbers, and we all probably, I could agree that there's this premise, that there might be somewhat of a housing shortage, you know, maybe not today, you know, maybe, you know, there's five people looking for houses and there's six available places. But on the premise that there is a looming housing shortage, you know, when we take living spaces off the market, you know, we're going in reverse. So again, when it started, where people that I knew were asked to leave and had to go find someplace else, and what used to be a place where folks had lived in for years is now a short-term rental. So, there are different perspectives. You know, if I'm a property owner and I want to pay for that mortgage, great. And that's fun, and it's sort of optional. You know, but when, if I live there, now I have no place to live, because where I used to live is now a short-term rental. That's not fun, and it's not optional. I have to, I'm being forced to go do something different. You know, so, there are different perspectives, and some of the ideas and thoughts that we're having, certainly would, that we're hearing, certainly would all be taken into account.
Well, I could just come back, I wouldn't say it's fun to be able to actually meet the expenses of property, it's either viable or it's not. And if it's not, it becomes not a rental. So you, the idea that, granted, there is a bunch of older rental owners in town that have got properties that they've owned for 20 or 30 years, that they bought when they were inexpensive. But a new property, you can't buy a single-family home or a duplex in Yellow Springs for under $130,000, $140,000. That means you have a $1,200 mortgage. We, so, the example of one of the properties we have is an Airbnb. It's a single-family home. It's 850 square feet. It has one bedroom, one bathroom, tiny little kitchen, and it costs us $95,000, put $30,000 plus a lot of sweat equity in it. It costs about $1,200 a month, between mortgage and taxes, and that's no maintenance. And so I would have to charge $1,300 a month for an 850-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bathroom house. So, yeah, I won't be able to rent for that, so I'll have to sell it. So I'll sell it for $150,000, $160,000, and it'll just be another expensive, small house. It will not increase your rental properties. Because it won't, I can't rent for that. Because just the nature of what rents cost in Yellow Springs and what property costs in Yellow Springs. I mean, unless you go with the whole main philosophy in subsidized housing, you're not gonna get inexpensive rental properties, or inexpensive houses, the way the town is now.
Yeah, we certainly love to hear some magic formula to solve, you know, the cost of housing across the board. You know, so, any good idea certainly a positive. So that's what we're here, fortunately, here are all of these great ideas from folks who have a lot of real-world experience.
So I think the one thing that catches me is that I've listened to you tell the same story several times, and I don't know if we really have that much documentation on this situation happening over and above the one situation that you talked about. And so it makes me nervous when the village gets wind of something that could be happening, right away we go into legislation.
Okay.
You know, these are, you know, most of us are just normal people, just trying to pay that property tax bill. And that's what I'm doing.
Yeah. And so, as Conanna started, you know, anybody who's already doing it is gonna be grandfathered in, so there will be very little chance for anybody who's already involved, number one. Number, second, number two, I mean, there, there's more than one example, but I don't want to get into an argument about that.
I don't want to argue, but I'd like some documentation.
And, and so let's go here. So, there are 32 registered temporary guest lodging residences. Patty's shaking her head.
Denise told me right before we did hear more than that.
Okay.
Well, we had quite a few just recently. And there's a couple properties that have, there's a couple registered with two. So we're at 39.
Okay. So, from the time we start talking to, talking about it to the time we got here, the numbers have increased. So, let's do this. Let's go back to a time before there were any, there were zero temporary guests, not before we started registering people, before there were any.
There were, there probably were, there's been that anyway.
Yeah.
There's probably never been a time when there hasn't been that, in yellow.
Well, it was...
It may not have been four months ago, but it's been here forever.
Yeah. It was couch surfing on, on zero.
No, no, no.
So... All right, well, let's just refer to, we won't talk about it here, but let's refer to the history of lodging in Yellow Springs. So it's documented here. So, we could do a deep dive, and I'm gonna stop talking because I don't want to hog up other airspace, but out of those units, however many there are, yeah, there were some that people were always leased, renting out, or were just letting friends stay, that was happening all along. You know, but how many of those 30-some-odd, nearly 40 places, used to be just regular homes or apartments, where folks could live there, long-term? So that is the, the answer to that question is, how many units have been impacted by those other families that I know?
Well, there's something that you're not taking into account. Out of those units, look at the increases we've had in our utilities, in our taxes, and all of that. Those things that were affordable for the people you're talking about, in the timeframe that you're talking about, aren't affordable now. It's not apples versus apples. It's like he said, you can't afford, I was one of those people that asked tenants to leave my place. I live, it's broken up, so they're two separate places. But I asked my tenants to leave, because I wouldn't be able to live here if I didn't. I can't afford anymore to rent that place for what it costs me to live there, because of all those increases. So you have to account for all of that, which you're not accounting for. Those aren't affordable homes. And yes, there is a shortage, it's not a makeshift, there is a shortage for affordable homes, and that's not ever gonna change, because the amount of property that we have in Yellow Springs is gone, to make that affordable housing possible for people anymore. And so you can't just put that on the backs of, you know, the homeowners that are here now, or the, you know, the people that maybe at one time could afford to do that.
So, I want to talk about, I think we need to differentiate, and I don't know, I'm sorry I came in late, I don't know if there was any differentiation between these 39 units, but there's a lot involved in these 39 units. I've gone through Airbnb, I've done a count, my count doesn't totally come up with, doesn't account for all of the 39 that Denise has, but as far as I can tell, only eight to 10, maybe up to 12 of these units are standalone homes. Most of them are, like Kathy's doing, in her house. Chances are, she's not going to have a full-time renter in her house. Or something like Ted and I have an accessory structure. Again, we, our math, just as Dan said, our math was based upon, our building map was based upon transient lodging rather than a full-time renter. So, I think we need to, we can't just say the number 39 and think that there are 39 houses out there that are off the market, or 39 properties that are off the market. That's inaccurate. So, you know, I don't know if Denise has the information to better describe what each of those, I mean, I've got, I've got 27 units identified. I don't know what the other, the other 10 units are.
Okay, I wasn't expecting that question for tonight. So I just told you what my alley is, but you can pick out three of those. One is hotel, one's a bed breakfast.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. So it's probably about 36, but as far as if there are people who are living there or they're not living there, I don't have that, have to go back to that.
I've, I've got, what I counted was that there were made, that there were three out-of-town people who don't live in Yellow Springs. And I wasn't counting you guys, I counted you guys as locals. But that there were three that lived completely out of town, not even in the area.
I would agree with that.
And I have spoken to two people that simply filled out paperwork just because they were thinking about doing that, because they had a spare room in their house.
I'm going off the permit list, but I'm not going off of, once, once I, once the permit comes to me, it goes elsewhere and the finance director deals with it. So I don't know as to how active they are.
My wife and I are actually owners who don't live in town, in Columbus, so if there's some perspectives on that end, we're the only ones that represent that group, we have to, to tell you our experience.
Well, tell your, tell us your experience.
We bought it about six months ago. We probably spend an average of one to two weekends in town a month. So we don't live here, but we come quite often, since we're just in Columbus. It's been a good experience so far. It's mostly people that are coming in for yoga retreats or events at the university, or families are stopping through town. So, they're good renters, and I'm sure are spending a lot of money in town for tourist dollars, and will pay the taxes, of course, to go along with the income we get from it, but it's been a good experience so far.
So that's the thing you really look at, is how much income to all these people who come into town. I mean, everybody who stays at our Airbnb, go, I mean, all of them, not cook, you know, they're like, they go to the restaurants, they go to all the different events, they come here for retreats, they come here for workshops, they come here...
They come here for competitions, and all kinds of...
Yeah. And they're, all of those people are bringing money into town and making Yellow Springs a thriving town. And it is, it is a, it's a tourist town, and that's the reason it's thriving. This supports that.
Can I ask a quick question? For those of you who are transient guest lodgers, owners, how many people, or what percentage of your contracts are with Airbnb versus like VRBO or, you know, Next, guys, and a lot, like, own?
Is that, is that important?
There's a reason why I ask, and it's about the way that taxes are paid.
Because I'd like to add something to the house conversation, if we'll move through that.
True.
Because I think this is such a complicated issue, and that I agree with you, and that as a retired teacher, of course I'd rather live in my house all by myself and my dog. But I, in order to live here now and stay here, I need that income. And nobody's getting rich going to the bank every month on Airbnb. I mean, and it's, it's been a super positive experience for me, to meet all the wonderful people who come to this town. And it makes me love the town more, because I forget what they say, how they enjoy it. And I just have to get this off my chest. But it's very upsetting when my guests read the newspaper, when people are so hostile to the tourists, or there are letters to the editor. I've had a couple of people read those, and they say, "Because we're, we have the reputation of being a welcoming, uh, town with open arms, and lots of times there's hostility in the paper to these people who are like here for a yoga retreat, who are here because their mother loves the glens and she died, and that they come here on the anniversary of her death." I mean, it's just absolutely uplifting spiritually for me, and it sure helps my relationship. So we need data. We need to understand exactly what the problems are, not just a general response. That's just my, to my view.
I'm also gonna throw out just a few other things, since I've been a rental property most of my life also. And in particular, there was a property that we had in Fairborn, that we finally sold at a wonderful loss, simply because of the eviction factor. Taking in a long-term tenant is oftentimes frustrating, to say the least. And you can talk to many of the people that own lots of properties, and they can tell you what a nightmare is when you get that, that wonderful person that just completely trashes your apartment, or has figured out how to become professional ranch hunters. You're looking at three months' lost income on your property, plus all your cleaning factors. And then the village does odd things that are sometimes subtle, where they say, "We want to have the additional housing or affordable housing." But the one that stumped me was when they said, "We couldn't have separate metering." So, you know, that in itself, I'm not going to have a property that can't be separated meter and let someone just run the electric and water constantly. That should be an option, even if we agree to pay for it. And the excuse to say that it's more efficient to have a single metering is a case, to me, that is halfway ridiculous, that it really takes that much longer to read one more meter. I just, I'm, there are things like that, again, they're subtle. But if you want us to rent to people on a long-term basis, you gotta add some incentive in there. You gotta help us with legal fees, we have to evict somebody that did something and it wasn't our fault. You can't make us responsible for grown people's utility bills. If they want to rent from us, that's great, but I'm not paying their cable bill, I'm not paying their vet fee, so I don't see why I have to pay their water bill if they become a deadbeat renter. That's yet another expense on me that I'm not signing up for.
I'll add a couple of things that's really into the fray here. I have a room in the house, I'm one of those folks who has an unoccupied rental, but I'm also someone who very frequently stays in Airbnbs when I travel, and more often than not, look for ones that are, are a single-family house somewhere on, in the planet, and appreciate that those are available when I go to pick a town. And as such, I've gained some familiarity with what other municipalities are considering. And we're talking here about municipalities that have serious affordability challenges, where, where a house would be four or five times what one costs in, in Yellow Springs. There are, as an example, the city of Austin puts a threshold of up to 3% of the single-family houses in each quadrant can be, can be included in the short-term rental system. Just as an example to throw out, I don't think that's, there's a particular data that drives that number, but I also saw the proposed amendment here in terms of a ban on future single-family short-term, or, single-family homes that are short-term rentals that are owner-unoccupied. And it struck me that, that there's a disconnect between whatever the desired outcome might be in pushing that, and the likelihood that the proposed amendment will achieve that outcome. And, and as such, I wanted to be here in solidarity with folks who have unoccupied single-family homes, and I'd say, I don't think it's a, it's a particularly data-driven amendment, and I don't support it.
So, Conanna, could I just say, so, I think, from what I'm hearing, everybody's thinking that there's just one possible way of regulating that council is thinking about. There are a lot of different ideas that have been thrown out there, and part of the reason for this meeting is to get your input on those different ideas. So, regulating the number of houses in a particular neighborhood, or in a zoning district or something, that has been tossed around. Owner occupied only has been tossed around. Living, an owner living within the village limits, but not necessarily on the property, has been discussed. Certain, you know, there have been a bunch of different ones, and, A.J., you wrote them down the other day when I was brainstorming, and if you have something that I've just missed, if you could read that. So I want everybody to understand that there are different things that have been discussed.
There was like a time, like in town, owner occupied eight months out of the year.
Yes, a limit on the number of nights, a limit on occupied nights. There was a limit on the number of nights potentially in a year. There, there were a bunch of different things. So if you have other ideas or other thoughts, I mean, council wants to hear all of those. It's not just this one thing that's being discussed or thought about. So, there were a bunch of different ideas that were out there, so I just wanted to... And what's the reason, I mean, I guess that would probably be, did you guys identify why this is being considered? Is it, is it for affordable, to provide more affordable housing, or is it to limit the number of, the amount of transient visitors? And I, I think that council's idea is to see if it needs to be regulated. It's not necessarily the council is absolutely intending to go forward with a particular, or with any type of regulation. The question is, if we need to do it at some point, what's the best way to do it? Is this the point, the point at which it is the time to do it? That's the discussion. It's not a, you know, Kevin brought the concern to council, and council said, "We need to know more about this." So... This has been identified, I mean, I think that, that the problem needs to be defined. Right. You know, I think that there are people that think it's a problem, but there isn't any data that really says that it's a problem. It's, yes, it's been anecdotally identified, yes. So there is no hard data about whether this is or isn't a problem yet. But this is, this is where council asked the Housing Advisory Board to look into it, and this is the step that we're taking.
Yeah, and I think it's a good idea, it's just really trying to be forward-thinking. You know, I've often said, "We're a small village, but we have big-city problems." Now, on a percentage basis, we're not really too far off, you know, from, except you do the math, you have little bigger cities. On a percentage basis, we're not too far behind. You know, but we're starting to talk about the kind of things that you see, you know, in bigger cities. Before, it's, it's a real problem. I mean, something that, in a bigger city, for example, I mean, they don't have a ban on single-family homes, but they have a ban on apartments. So you can't use apartments, because what typically happens is, someone will buy an apartment building, you know, and then all of those units become transient guest lodging, and, you know, there's a bunch of places in one spot in the vacuum there, but then they don't, don't break... But then they don't regulate single-family homes. So, yeah, it's just, you know, another, of a long list of kinds of things that cities, you know, that have implemented those types of rules have done. And I guess if we could do whatever's smart before it was a very serious problem, you know, we might be a step ahead of some of these other places. I mean, New York, again, example, I think it was New York. I mean, there was like this, I can't even remember the number of fines that somebody incurred just recently.
Millions?
Millions, yeah, almost 20 or so.
That's scary, too.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, again, that's big. But on a percentage basis, you know, we can't necessarily say that just because we're smaller on scale in comparison to a city like that, that we would never have those issues.
I'd like to share a little experience, if that's okay. So I own an apartment building that's commercially owned. And that's one thing I wanted to bring up also, is that can be different for commercially-owned properties if those are residential. I rented to people, you know, when we first moved into Yellow Springs. And had the same renters that lived there and bought the building up until about a year ago. And I don't know what it's like for other property owners, but the condition of my property has gone from trashed to pristine. And that's really hard to not, you know, take into consideration. People who moved out, I did, I gave them their deposit back and then ended up having to eat tons of money for landlords. You know what that's like. It's tough to say, you know, to Airbnb when you feel like your investment's protected. And these people also are very concerned about the gentrification of Yellow Springs. And ironically, it's our being able to do that that allows my wife and I, whom she grew up in this town, to stay here.
I think another point I want to make, although I understand what you're talking about in New York and you brought up other cities, Barcelona, wherever. I think that it would be much more effective if we could come up with, you could find, as it seems to be passionate for this, to find other communities about our size where this really has happened. Because I think that it's, again, to throw out San Francisco, New York, Paris, all these other places, I'm just not sure that that's really the best way to give an example of a town of 3500 people. I think it'd be nice if we could find some examples of something more like Yellow Springs, just to prove that there really is a problem.
And I think the examples are there. Little villages in England.
Well, Minneapolis, New York, there's a complete moratorium on transit lodging.
Yes.
But is it because of affordable housing? Or is it because they just don't want visitors staying in houses, in people's houses? I mean, is it a safety neighborhood thing, or is it?
It's more on the social side. It was, you know, not knowing who your neighbors are, damage, you know, to property, you know, disturbing, you know, the neighborhood.
So that seems like a different problem than we may be talking about here. That seems like they don't want the visitors there. They don't want the visitors in the neighborhoods as they are here. And I, I mean, I do think that it wouldn't be a bad idea for us. Right now, it's basically a permitted use. I think that planning commission could consider returning it to a conditional use, meaning that there would be some oversight and at least the neighbors would be notified that there was going to be transient lodging in the neighborhood.
That was one I missed. That was one I missed, because we had talked about returning it to a conditional use.
But that really won't have anything to do with the numbers.
Right.
Because chances are, I don't think that, I don't think that the argument against having them is that, against, would be that strong. So I doubt that that many of them would not be permitted, unless there was a huge traffic or parking issue.
Has anybody complained about traffic, parking issues with Airbnb?
No. I mean, I know when Bob was trying, was working on Jailhouse, I think some of the neighbors were concerned that there might be a parking issue, but I don't think it has been.
I live across the street from Bob, and it's a non-issue.
It was raised, it was raised in the, in the meeting, in the planning commission meeting, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, being new to the area and being new to the Airbnb industry, I mean, what have been the major community issues with Airbnb or the transit lodging? And have any issues?
There aren't any.
I don't think so. One of the, one of the things I've been concerned about, maybe it's just kind of an emotional reaction to this based on reality, but is that these freestanding, non-owner-occupied, I don't want those to take over my neighborhood.
Right.
Having said that, I plan to pay for business in another month. But it's in my house. I live there, it's in my house. It's upstairs, you go in the apartment, it's upstairs in my house. And it's never gonna be a full-time rental, because we need access to the space for visitors who come to see us too. So, you know, but my concern has been, I don't want, I don't want to take over the neighborhood, I want to have neighbors.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen that happen, really.
So there's been concerns, but no major issues?
I don't think there are many issues.
No.
And I mean, like you're saying, like, you don't want to take over the whole community. And maybe there's a good idea, like, percentage of them could be blocked out, or maybe, you know, once some of them go, or if they sold off into a home.
There's four Airbnb units within half a block of my house. And I haven't seen any problems with any of it. There's six within spitting different distances of my house, and I haven't seen a problem. But I wouldn't say there aren't people who feel there's a problem. It isn't documented, in my opinion, it's anecdotal. But people do feel, well, all these rental units are taken away by Airbnb, converted Airbnbs. So, and it probably is putting pressure on finding affordable rentals.
Do we know how many rentals are actually in Yellow Springs? Between apartments and?
But the housing study. Yeah, it's in the housing, it's the housing needs assessment that we had done last year, but I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head.
It has declined, it has declined over the years. And it's at the lowest point that it's been in a while.
But that's not, you got Airbnb.
Right.
If that's mostly the cost of the properties, it's just, as you sell, you know, the dumpies that have got hundreds of rental units that have been here for 30 years can still afford to rent them at what would be reasonable rates. But as soon as those houses transfer, you can't, you can't buy them and rent them for that. It's just not possible. The average price of a single-family home nowadays, you know, things, what, $175,000? You can find one for that. So, you know.
And then after that price, so you have to put how much into?
Right, and those are, those are houses, yeah, for $50,000. So you've got to charge $2,000 a month for rent. No one's gonna pay that, so you have to sell them, you know, or some other way of doing it.
Isn't this just part of a bigger problem, though? I mean, it seems to me, from what I've, what I've been told, housing shortage is nothing new in Yellow Springs. Right, so I mean, this may be making it a little more difficult, but it's not really gonna address the main problem, is it?
We've opened up several tracks in town, but like, if you look at Old Virg Street, for example, where you probably could have stuck six times as many houses up there. But we chose big houses, and that's what we want out there.
So you have to encourage somehow developers to put small houses in. And that would be something that the community and the government could do somehow. But it would have to be financially.
And in fact, most of the developers that we're speaking to these days are looking to put more homes in because that's the only way that they're able to make enough that they can afford to buy the properties. So, and I think it's possible, because of the possibility. But I think it's important to note that, yes, we do have a severe housing shortage here in Yellow Springs. But it is also a nationwide problem that is growing exponentially because real estate is increasing at such an incredible rate nationwide. And, you know, for instance, I, the area I grew up in is a rural area. It's still a township, it's still farms and blue collar. And I cannot believe the price of the land there now. It's just incredible, and I would never have believed it would get to those prices in my lifetime. It's not as high as Yellow Springs, but it's getting darn close. So, this Airbnb is just one of those additional problems that factors into that, that problem that is created nationwide, but very much so here in Yellow Springs. From what we see with the housing needs assessment and just all the information that we have, it's just one of those pieces, but it's a piece that we do need to look at, I think. Just, if nothing else, to be a little bit ahead of the game in thinking about, it may be this problem that we have to look at at some point.
If it becomes a problem.
Right, it may be, yes.
And I think that we also don't want to lose sight of the fact that there, right now, is a reason that people want these, these transit lodging facilities here. Ever since before the motel was built, the hotel was built and I had the motel, I was just, I was always packed, and there just weren't enough, just weren't enough rooms in this town. Even though my parents had been renting out a room in our house since the 70s. And then my mother, when she moved over to Elm Street, she had a nice little semi-separate apartment in her house. And she always had that full, really long before Airbnb invented. So, it's, it's done out there. But I, I think we want to just remember that, that again, there are reasons that people really like to come to this town. And I would hate to push them away. Say, no, we don't want you to come here. If you really want affordable housing, you can look at a lot of communities around us, and I can tell you how to do it. And it's, rip out the playgrounds and start limiting other entertainment venues, don't repair the streets. We can, we can turn this town affordable pretty fast. You can see around us a lot of small towns that really struggle. I went to a, one of the little towns up north on 68, went to their street fair, which consisted of a small band on a trailer and four booths. That was their annual street fair.
One of his recent investors, that's what I was just gonna say, the town, you guys have made a town that people want to come to, and that's why we did what we did. I was gonna ask, with the huge fairs that you have, where is the housing for the tourists? I mean, I hear, I hear the restaurant understand that you get 50,000 people in a weekend. Where do they go? If there's only the hotels out?
It's a one-day thing. They come in and they go left.
Yeah.
But a lot of them do come and stay. Yeah, they stay in the evenings and they stay in the rooms.
And the people running the booths want to stay here because they have to sit up, right?
Right. A lot of people are out of town, hotels out of town, Springfield, Dune.
I'd like to make another point. I don't have an Airbnb, and never did have one. I don't manage one, and at this point, I don't see that I'll do one in my future. But I would like, I do have a vested interest. I have one daughter here, Keith is back there, my son-in-law, who has Airbnbs. I had a son here up until last summer who had an Airbnb, separate from his home, but on the property. And I would like this committee and council to please quit citing anecdotal information unless you are absolutely certain it's a fact. Because a lot of that is on Facebook, and I happen to know from personal experience, because it was about me, that it's inaccurate. It said I owned an Airbnb and went on to talk about, you know, not being able to afford the bills, which is absolutely silly. And what I hear this, when I, when you make your regulations, I would really like to see something that's factual. And that's, sometimes doesn't happen in your experience.
I agree with you.
I'm sorry, I'm being very frank.
No, no, I agree with your point, but, I mean, I don't know that, I don't recall anything the council has done on, like, in that regard. Like, anything about anyone in particular?
Well, no, you were just saying that they, when you, when you brought the point that one of the reasons for doing this was that people were being thrown out of their, their homes, their long-term rentals, to turn them into Airbnb. And we have an example of that, is that if she didn't turn into Airbnb, she would have had to leave the town, which would be horrible. So that's a pretty good, you know, you are the owner of the property. If you can't make enough rent to pay the mortgage and pay the bills, then you've got to do something else, or leave town. All that meant is she would have had to leave town, and the house would have gone up for sale, and been one of those $200,000 houses that wouldn't be a rental, not only.
This wasn't actually targeted in your statement. It's targeted to council in general, this committee in particular, to look at the facts, try to dig them out, try to fish out what the problems are, and react to that instead of reacting to pressure that's anecdotal. And I've seen that, I've lived here since 1979, and before that, I lived here in 69 to 71. I've seen this over and over, a lot. And it's hard to sit back and see this happen every time there's a huge issue. So I'm asking, please react with facts, and learn what they are.
I'm sure that the little house that we have, the woman that lived there that had moved out because we bought it and were rehabbing it is unhappy about losing her house. But the people who owned the house sold it. And for what they sold it, even if I had done nothing to it, I couldn't let her rent it for $600 a month. I can't afford to subsidize somebody's rent. And she wouldn't have been able to afford the $900 a month I would have had to charge her, versus the $1,200 a month that would have charged somebody after it's been rehabbed and all. I mean, the house is about to fall down, so.
And it's the risk of moving a rental home, if you don't want to have the risk of being evicted.
And, and.
Evicted more than once, but not for Airbnb, because the owner wanted to do something different. So, it's, it's not an unusual problem, if you're a renter, that you maybe ask to leave. If you don't have a lease, you don't have a choice.
So Airbnb causing that?
I think that Karen's point was wise in terms of council evaluating what it hopes to accomplish by considering regulations on this. And if the issue is kind of, what does the social fabric of the community look like? Then, then the, I think it suggests some data-driven inquiry about where the tipping point is in terms of what fraction of the homes in the community could grow to become transient lodging before we lose ourselves. And it's some number, and it's probably some number that's quite a bit higher than the, than the three dozen that it is now. And if the, if the issue is more preservation of affordability, my feeling is probably gonna have to look elsewhere. And the one, the one category that might, that might involve transient lodging are, would be apartments. And those might be worth taking a different look at than than, than single or even multifamily homes.
You mean not allowing it potentially, is?
I personally would be biased against an outright ban, but I think that there's a, to the extent that you're looking at something that's designed physically and structurally as a rental, that's, that to me is a different category of dwelling. And it seems more likely, to me, that the question is, is that a short-term rental or a long-term rental?
Do we have a definition of short-term versus long-term?
Well, it's now transient, which is less than 30 days, right?
Yes.
I would also be interested to know about the commercial zoning versus residential.
I mean, I think it is absolutely important, because, I mean, we've, I think it's doubled. Would you guess doubled, can you, Airbnb's in Yellow Springs?
Probably, I mean, I did count a while ago, and it's higher, definitely.
A lot higher than when I first started doing this. So, I mean, if we have 60, they didn't remember, I mean, is 60 gonna be a tipping point? Do we have some idea in mind? How, I mean, if you grandfather everybody in at 60, you know, so I appreciate the fact that you want to examine. So I appreciate the fact that you wanna examine everything. But I think it has to be so done so deliberately. And that's why I said earlier, it's very complicated. Because you, if you controls, put certain controls on people, the very people you want to stay here will have to go. That's common, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a linear solution, you know? There'll be some of this and some of that and some over here and some over there perhaps.
But everybody I talked to wants to have an Airbnb.
I am?
Yeah.
There does, I mean, to me, seem some logic to, to having some limits to it. And I don't see that there's a problem with that. If you then say, well, okay, we're gonna cap it and then go right back over here and say, but from now on, anyone who wants to do that, that's fine. Submit your application, let it go before a board explains why it's, why you either need to do this or want to do this. And then have some avenue for people to try and do that. Maybe there's an area of town where, it just doesn't matter if, if there's a kind of war. And so, you know, look at it individually, review it. Don't just, don't just do a blanket policy for every single thing, say what we do is you, just like when you want to build an auxiliary structure, right? You would, you would make your plan, have an idea, go talk to the people and explain your case and see where it goes with that. Maybe you might have to have some, a few letters signed from your next neighbors to say, to say, hey, I owe a pay for that.
Well, also, I think before anybody starts making their rules about how you're gonna regulate this, you need to find out if you have a problem.
Be sure.
You know, because if you don't have a problem, then there's no reason to pursue it. What, what were the thing, why did council visit this at all? What were the issues that they're worried about?
So the issues, a couple of issues. One, Kevin mentioned it, was the worry that people will continue to lose housing due to Airbnbs. But then also, there's kind of the idea of outside investors buying up single-family homes, creating Airbnbs. And whereas those could be, you know, homes or if a family's looking to move here, they would be able to move into a home, you know?
So loss of community.
Yeah. I mean, and that's something that other cities are taking. I mean, Columbus, for example, they have bans on Airbnbs and caps on Airbnbs, so, in certain neighborhoods. So, I mean, tho- those are the types of things that, moving forward, I don't, I don't see anyone in front of me and saying, you are the problem, right? Like, that's not the reality. What I'm looking up is, at what point will we get to our neighborhood being like, Airbnbs from investors that don't live here, that are from outside, who say, this is a cash cow and this is how I'm gonna make tons of money off of the same tourists that come here for all of you, for our community, for what we put into it. But then, once that community's gone, I mean, it will self-deplete because then what are tourists coming from if the community is not here, you know? So I do think that the, there's a, a balance to strike. I don't think that it's right now, right here, you know? I think that it is something that we'll have to monitor and kind of see where it goes. I, I can't say that, I am not worried that it won't happen, but I don't think that it's urgent to where tomorrow, we're gonna be taken over by Airbnbs that no one else is gonna be moving into the community because they won't be able to get a house. But, I mean, it is a, a situation that we should monitor.
When you say investors, do you prefer investment firms or just individual families like my wife and I? Because we, we thought about moving here, but we own a hair salon in Columbus. We can't just pick up and move with that type of business. And eventually, we might move here in twenty years. So I think the word investor needs to be defined too.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, you're an individual, do you have other Airbnbs?
Yeah.
Or anything like that? Yeah, so the, the thing is that there are, there are groups and it would be more, more or less groups of people who come together, buy up properties in, in multiples, not just one house, not just one house in one little neighborhood. But if you have the buying power to, let's say, buy a handful of houses in Yellow Springs, that might not seem like a lot to most people, but in a town that's small enough, that can make a huge impact in a community and in a neighborhood. So I, it's not, you know, one little house, but if you have the buying capacity, which there are some people who do.
It's, it's not, I wouldn't say it's a cash cow. It pays the mortgage and it pays the taxes, you know?
Plus it takes work.
And, and basically, it takes work to do. I, I, you know, I look at rental property as an auxiliary, long-term investment thing. So we have a number of different rental property, most of it's long-term, and Airbnb. You know, we've got figured out that it was the one Airbnb. And that one just turned out when I bought it, that we paid too much, much money for the house and it needed too much renovation. And it would have taken a lot more to make it, turn it into a reasonable rental. And it would have cost too much. So it, it only, it only lended itself to that, so that's why we're doing that. I don't see any, Yellow Springs is not a market now, at least, at least what I see on the Airbnb thing of what people are getting a night, you can make lots of money. You could make enough to pay the mortgage and pay taxes and maybe a little bit of supplemental income, but it's not a lot. It's, you know, a hundred bucks a month or fifty bucks a month. And that's not the kind of money that, that large corporations going, I mean, if they're going in New York City and you can get twenty-five hundred dollars a night, yeah, that's a different thing. But you can get, you know, sixty-seven dollars in Yellow Springs, which is, and sometimes you get eight.
On the street fair, right?
Oh, yeah, occasionally you get it.
But I think your point is well-taken. And I don't want to live in a neighborhood where everything is an Airbnb around me either. That would be like not living in Yellow Springs anymore. And so it's really important that we maintain the, the sense of who we are, whatever that is. It cannot become just a tourist town.
Well, maybe you look at a grid and you say, okay, they're here, 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 here. And maybe you say, well, there's already a saturation in this neighborhood, so you don't really have to wait until somebody else stops being an Airbnb until we let you be an Airbnb.
But I, and I really like your suggestion, except that I think it's so, so problematic if you have to apply for a permit, to be awarded a permit, not just paying your twenty-five dollars, which would mean that, right? Where they're really examining the neighborhood, the impact, a committee, I don't know.
I have a couple of questions. When I was on plan board, we were not allowed to ban any legitimate legal business. You could regulate it and you could regulate it to the farthest corner that nobody could see it, which was certainly thought about from porn businesses. If you could come up with a definition for porn, which we never did when I was on plan board. So I'm wondering how a ban can even be discussed for this town and how it's legal. I don't see that.
I don't think anyone is thinking of an outright ban. It's not something that I would ask.
It's been mentioned today. It's actually been mentioned here, so I just bring that up. The other point is, my husband and I own three long-term housing rentals. We pay the utility, we have three wonderful tenants. We pay the utilities on one of them, all the utilities. On the other two, we had to charge, you know, a deposit, a rental deposit and a long, and a utility deposit, which was just about as high as the rental deposit. And we were going to charge a PAP deposit for one of the other two. Although we, we didn't, but we would have, she has a PAP. What could have been an affordable home for two of those three is suddenly out of the ballpark with all those deposits. And those deposits, the only one we were really nervous about and kept firm on was utility. Because we're the ones that have to pay it. And frankly, the village has said they will let you know, but that hasn't happened with us. So, no, they told us the second month. And as I say, we have wonderful tenants, so it wasn't too bad of an issue. My point being, there, things happen, slips happen. We have to ensure ourselves that we aren't gonna get a three thousand dollar bill because somebody got to turn off the tap. And then they leave. So I think part of the issue is Airbnbs are a lot simpler. They get cleaned every time they turn over, the utilities are on one name. They're just simpler. And, and they're, the village has priced the long-term rentals to the point that they're, they're difficult.
So, so there's something the village could do to improve the rental property thing is reverse the philosophy of the tenant, the landlord's responsible for the utilities. Because it just makes the rentals more expensive. Because landlords, as, when they were discussing that, have just passed it on to the tenants. And so the tenants have to come up with that money upfront.
No, every increase that has happened on our utility and everything, that's what they keep saying, is just pass it along to your tenants, pass it along to your tenants. You can't pass it along to the tenants. And that's why I finally went to an Airbnb because I couldn't pass any more of that stuff on. And I couldn't afford it without doing it a different way, yeah.
I'll make a comment also just on this document I put together. If anybody wants to add to it or make comments about it, send me a private message.
Is that this TGO, is that this thing?
Yeah, and as we get more unbriefed information, I can make it work.
I, I have a question that I can't, that I've been trying to get the answer to for three years. If anyone in the Airbnb community has the answer in terms of insurance, when they live in your home or they, when it's part of your home. Because it's a very complicated issue. And I've been back and forth with my own insurance company directly with the, what they call, not the owner, no, the, the person who holds the insurance company. The owner. And there's a new insurance called Proper Insurance. That's with Lloyds of London, that is especially for Airbnb. But they quoted me twenty, twenty-two hundred dollars a year.
Supposedly Airbnb is supposed to cover it.
But that's extremely questionable because you can't see the policy.
Exactly. And, and at least from what people have said, is that it, it is hard to get Airbnb paid. It's not impossible.
You don't have insurance if they won't respond. And if you don't rent through, if you rent only through Airbnb, that's one thing. But most, most owners of transient lodging rent only through Airbnb.
Well, one of the things that I have done is I, I had my insurance agent add to my, because it's, for me, it's a garage. And I had them add a, a home business insurance policy onto my homeowners' insurance, that I was running a home business out of my home. And it was, I think, seventy-five dollars a year.
Okay, so I can't begin to tell you the number of hours I've spent on this, on it all, and with people. I just got a call from Central, who I've been with for twenty years, right? Saying that they would give me an extra policy for more liability. That made no sense to me. So there's only one company in the country, which is the Proper Insurance, that covers you for everything supposedly. If you have an Airbnb and someone slips and falls or someone takes your bike or, and has an accident or someone's in the hot tub and they slip. And, and so I, but I just thought, maybe somebody out there, maybe some of you know something. Because I don't feel confident with the Airbnb insurance.
So I added the home, the home business policy.
Is that an overall policy?
And I have that too, I added that. So I've always had that though, because I've, I've had a child in my life that could potentially cause me problems, and so I've always had a total policy.
But that could end up being twenty-two hundred dollars then?
Oh, my, no, my overall policy is, I think, thirty dollars a month.
Personal problem insurance. I just, I don't know.
Probably paying around two-twenty-five to have both the overall policy and the business.
It's not that, we got State Farm and it's not that expensive. And it covers, covers all, all.
The business?
Covers the business. The Airbnb in our house, Airbnb in my own business, and both of them are covered separately, but it's not.
Maybe I should talk to your, your people.
And look for on Facebook, look for the, there's a Facebook, if you do, if you're on Facebook. It's the Y S Airbnb Hosts. And if you send me a message, I'll invite you. At McLogan's, I think. It's Y S Airbnb Hosts. I think we have a whopping four members in there.
No, you don't. I joined back then. I think it's seven.
Ooh. Watch our language, Nick.
Hey, does anyone have anything else to add, any other question?
Yes, this is going back a little bit to when I first joined the meeting, which was late. But you're talking about different size communities that, and that comparing, say, Karen's to Yellow Springs might not be equal. My hometown back in Maine is Bar Harbor, Maine, which has become, since the seventies, a huge, a huge tourist attraction. Attracted millions to the island every, every summer. And, and I'm just viewing this from afar. But what has happened, because I've, I've, along with my family members, have rented in Bar Harbor in the summertime. I've observed what has happened to the neighborhoods. And what does happen is a total disintegration of the community for three months out of the year. And then, it's sometimes now four months. Because the, the, the vacation time has been expanded. And I see it as, as just, not exactly a tragedy because people are paying their taxes and their insurance that way and the extra money, just like those of us who are renting out, getting extra payment. Nevertheless, I just see it as formalized. It's about the same size as, as Yellow Springs, if you wanted to have a comparison. And, and of course, the, the amount of tourism is gigantic compared to this. This is very mild. Nevertheless, what it has done to the community is, just from me viewing it from afar, and I'm not, I'm not privy to it as a member of the community anymore. But I would hate to see that happening here.
I'd like to revisit Kevin's question earlier because he asked it, but we weren't quite. That's okay, I just, I want, I know why he asked the question and asked. And the question that he asked is, for those of you here who rent on Airbnb and potentially on other sites, if Airbnb were to collect your taxes on their rentals that are in the village and send it to the village, would that make it easier or harder on you? And I, I would tell you flat out that council and staff are divided on this topic. Because for staff, it seems like it would make it harder, not only on staff, but also on you as Airbnb owners. You try to keep separate what Airbnb is collecting for you as opposed to where you're booking all the other sites and having to remit that yourselves. But there's a discussion as to whether to sign a contract with Airbnb to collect those taxes only on Airbnb rentals. And then you would still have to remit on the taxes on the RBO or whatever the other sites are. So that's why he asked the question. So the question is, for those of you who rent through Airbnb, would you want them to collect your tax for you or not want them to collect? Is that your question, Kevin?
That's, that's it, yeah. I, I think that, oh, I'm sorry. The reason I do like the idea that they do it is that then you at least do get a good dose of honest reporting, if you know what I mean.
And, and I understand what you're saying, because it is an honor system that we're trusting you to, to do that. But then again, if you rent on all these other sites as well, then.
Right, yeah, I mean, there is a huge possibility that that just isn't gonna be reported to you, but at least now you're getting something.
Well, I have a big issue with the way the whole taxing is set up in the first place. So we can't add-
So, we can't add on tax. If I charge $50 for a room, I can't add that tax on, no matter how I do it, unless I put my hand out when they walk in the door and say, oh, by the way, there's a tax, they have to give the cash in. Airbnb charges me a percentage of what my $50, and I don't get that. So in terms of my gross, my gross is what I get paid, not what Airbnb charges. So when I get that money, I'm not going to add on the tax because I'm losing money. I have to take the tax out of the gross, back it out, and say that I make less money than what Airbnb tells me I'm making.
About 6%.
Six?
Because Airbnb's speed was the 3%.
Oh, plus, yes, yes. So then, yes, so that makes the tax grow even higher. Also, Airbnb sends me a report once a year, and it tells me, so, you made a regulation about anything over 30 days is not considered transient, so I rented out my room for 30 days, so I'm not going to pay tax on that. So, but Airbnb sent me a yearly statement that included that money, so now I have to figure out, how do I take it out? And then I paid half in the middle of the year, based on my books, when I got the statement from Airbnb, somewhere I'm short $58, so then how do I reconcile that? So the whole system, the way it's set up, is not easy for us at all, and Airbnb doesn't have an add-on tax ability.
So if you, just for instance, if you're booked for 30 days through Airbnb and they collected that tax, then you would be out that tax.
That's fine. I'd rather have them add on tax, have a, you know, if they can do it.
They can do it, that's what she's saying. They're signing up, they do it in some town.
They do it for big cities, because they have so much.
Right.
But to do it for a little town, when we've got 35 Airbnbs?
And it would only be for Airbnb site, it wouldn't be for any of the other sites, because they don't have, they don't offer similar services.
Right. Well, we're just talking about Airbnb right now, I don't know, is anybody?
Well, that's the question, I imagine someone does something besides Airbnb, somebody, no?
No, we don't, we just get Airbnb.
I don't, I don't understand.
Is Airbnb?
Yeah, yeah.
I saw it on Airbnb.
I saw it on the mobile way, but I haven't done it.
So that's the answer to the other question, what percentage, you know, are Airbnb and
what are others?
Airbnb has been the easiest to use. I mean, I've stayed in both Airbnb and VRBOs, and by far Airbnb is straightforward, easy to use, so that's why I've used it.
Plus, I think that we rate them and they rate us.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's rated.
I love Airbnb collecting taxes, because then it would be charged.
That's actually a good comment to make.
Exactly. That would be a boon for us.
You know, there's concern about the neighborhoods, what kind of people are you bringing in. I will tell you, with Airbnb, when the people are coming in, these are quality tenants that you're bringing in, because they are not going to take a chance that they accidentally left a sock in the dryer at your place, because they're not going to accept getting a star rating, at least five stars, because some places just won't accept them if they have a bad rating. And so, I know.
I'm a soft one, because I get all the.
The dryer spits them back out.
We won't charge her, we won't have to charge her.
Yeah, we buy the charger.
Luckily, I get a lot of guests that leave ice cream in the freezer. But it is one thing that I know for sure, when these people come in, that place is going to look like the way I set it up.
It's too.
It is a.
So we've had one couple that put more trash in two nights than everybody else put together, and they never got out of bed for two days.
Yeah.
We have that.
Right, right.
No, they were twitchers, so they were on their computers, the whole thing. So they're twitching.
No. Why is it twitchy?
Well, it's basically where you do something, say, play video games, and people throw money at you on the computer to watch you play, like on YouTube or whatever, I think it's an Amazon app, and they pay you big bucks to watch you play, or watch you sleep, or try to keep you awake when you want to sleep, or whatever.
You should charge people some money for that.
Why, why charge?
By making money.
Watch me knit all day and give me lunch.
Let me just finish that one thought. And then I, you know, I also have just two houses over for me, I have a house that I ran, and I also built a one, a two-car garage with a park on the stairs that my sister has decided to get to. My original intention was to make it a transit lodging, but my sister talked me into moving in there instead, and so, okay, that's fine. But now, what I've noticed is that the amount of traffic that comes in and out of my next-door rental property, with my sister and the person in the front house, is easily six to eight times what it is for my Airbnb guests who come, park their car, they're on foot the rest of the week. That's it. There isn't that traffic going in and out, and again, they're not going to, they're not going to play loud music, they're not going to have late-night parties.
Because we say no.
Yeah, you just hit the power. And the other is if they're a bad tenant, you just simply change the combination on the lock, because they are evicted. That's all there is to it. No filing fees, no lawyers.
Well, and Airbnb.
Airbnb or just a regular rental?
Or Airbnb.
And Airbnb will collect damages if there's problems.
Yeah, they do. So Canetta wants to make sure she got everyone's contact information on the side of sheet, just got that formal close down.
So this has been great. I really appreciate everyone's experiences with their Airbnb use and really lots of things. Thank you, everyone.